Good morning and welcome to the July 27, 2022 City Council Meeting. We will begin with the invocation from Councilman McGee followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
May we bow. My gracious Father, we first of all come before you, thank you for this day. We thank you for these who have gathered here this morning. We thank you for our life, our health, and our strength, and we thank you for this council. We pray that you bless them with wise decisions, that we may better govern our city. We thank you for our police department and our fire department and all those first responders that put their lives on the line on a daily basis, that we may live in a community and feel safe. We thank you for all your continued blessings, and we pray that you would keep your hands of love and protection around us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the minutes from June 14, 2022, and June 22, 2022.
Move to approve minutes as presented, sir.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to come down for some awards and picture time. All right, first of all, we have... 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 All right, first of all, we have Jason Burton, Police Lieutenant, 20 years. Are you here? Not here? Well, let's give him a hand anyway. Next, we got the famous Carrie Long, Police... [inaudible] 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 All right. Now we have Daniel Forby, Police Officer, 25 years. What? The what? No. Oh, I had the right list there. Richard Struther, Police Officer, 20 years. Okay, all that news, I don't even hear. Okay. Okay, Stephen Lockhart, Police Sergeant, 25 years. Did you get a bow back there? No, no, no. All right, and Aureliano Laramontez Labor, 35 years of service. Are you here? Picture time. And just a quick note, on my sheet it says 145 years of service, and another sheet it says 125 years, so I'm not sure what it is, but it's a long time. And, and all I can say is, is for all you, all of y'all that have worked for the city for 20 years or 35 years, you're, you're, you're what makes this city so great. And, uh, makes us proud to live here. You're called to serve spirit. No matter what you do, you make our city a better place. So, thank you all so much.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Kyle.
This, uh, first request is a zone change, uh, request from RPO, which is Restricted Professional Office District, to RMF, Multi-Family Residential District. Uh, this is to allow for the development of duplexes on the property. The adjacent properties to the north are Zone C1, like commercial, and PMF, Planned Multi-Family Residential, currently developed with, uh, commercial uses and multifamily, uh, townhome uses. The, uh, adjacent properties to the east are currently, is currently Zone R1A, uh, single family, and it's currently undeveloped. To the south is also R1A and R2, uh, developed with, uh, single family homes, or duplexes, and, uh, undeveloped land. Then to the west is developed with an office. The, uh, future land use guide is consist, or would amend the future land use guide from the multifamily, uh, or makes you center to multifamily, which is consistent with the, the surrounding properties to the south and east. The, uh, again, the applicant is requesting this, to develop, uh, five duplexes on this, uh, this property. The general area is developed with office, apartment, and duplex uses. The, uh, of the notices that we, we sent out, we did receive one in opposition, uh, with the protest calculation of 16.42 percent. Uh, the, the opposition was mostly just concerned with, uh, making sure the, the property is developed with, or keeps, keeps in mind the, uh, some of the drainage considerations of that, that property, uh, in which the, the applicant, when they develop the, or design the site, they will have to, uh, design it to accommodate the, uh, the drainage, uh, characteristics of that property. Of the, uh, or the, the plan to commission by a 7-0 vote, recommended approval of the zone change from RPO to RMF.
Any questions or comments for Kyle?
No. Move to approve Z1.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
Next request is a zone change from R1A, Single Family Residential District to PUR, Planned Unit Residential District. Uh, this is to allow for the development of single family homes. Uh, this is, uh, just north of Cumberland, Cumberland Road and, uh, Crook and Trail. Uh, the, it's in Council District Number 6. Uh, the subject property is, uh, locate, oh, excuse me. Uh, the, the adjacent property to the north, uh, currently Zone R1A, uh, is the location of a cemetery. The, uh, properties to the west are currently undeveloped, uh, but are zoned for single family and single family attached, uh, residential units. Uh, to the east is currently developed with single family homes and commercial uses, and then to the south is currently developed with, uh, residential, single family homes, uh, and is currently zoned for agricultural, uh, use. This request is consistent with the future land use guide, identifying it as single family, medium-low density. The, uh, the proposed site plan, uh, for the property, uh, shows 98 single, 98 single family homes. Uh, this, this zoning would be subject to this, the proposed site plan, as you see here. Uh, the proposed site plan stipulates that most of the lots will be subject to R1B standards, which is, uh, a minimum of 6,000 square feet, uh, lot size, although many of these lots do exceed that 6,000 square feet lot size. The, uh, the, the property that is located along Crook and Trail... Along Crook and Trail, that is opposed to remain R1A standards, so that would be that minimum lot size of 9,000 square feet, but essentially the, the lot size proposed, shown here, and the setbacks are consistent with, uh, the other R1A lot, so it is intended to be consistent with the other homes along Crook and Trail. The, the site plan along the east side there does show a, a tree buffer, uh, between this development and the Crook and Trail homes to the east, that is stipulated by the site plan. The, uh, the proposed site plan also shows a future right-of-way for, uh, a future collector's street to be accommodated through this development, uh, on the north and south side. The, uh, the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan identifies this area as an emergent growth area, and, uh, due to its proximity to commercial institutional, uh, uses, as well as Toll 49 and the Cumberland Road extension that's recently completed. A letter, uh, of, uh, a letter from the HOA was submitted, uh, from Crook and Trail residences. Uh, the, the HOA was, uh, was not, or due to some of the, the changes that the applicant made to the, to the site plan, and stipulations that they, they placed on that, uh, they did not oppose the, uh, the zone change. We did receive one letter in opposition, uh, from a neighbor, who was concerned with the, uh, the homes being proposed to be smaller than the existing homes that are along Crook and Trail. And, again, the, go back to the site plan, it does show that the, the applicant has, uh, attempted to accommodate that by keeping the, the lot that's along Crook and Trail, uh, similar to the other homes in the area. So, uh, with that, the, the protest calculation is, uh, .35 percent. The plan to commission by a 6-0 vote, uh, recommended approval of the zone change from R1A to PUR.
Any questions for Kyle before I call up David Socia? David, you want to come on up? Name and address for the record.
Good morning, Council. Uh, David Socia is, um, 120 West Fifth Street, um, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Socia? Good job.
Thank you.
Any comments, thoughts, motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I do want to say it, it's, it's, it's taken a while to get to this point, and I want to, uh, applaud the developer and the homeowners and Kyle, everybody who's worked on it. I think they've done a, a good job meeting, uh, making a compromise that everybody can live with, so I think they've done a good job, and I move to approve Z2.
Second. Got a motion by Curtis, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your project. Z3.
Uh, this item was, uh, was tabled at the previous meet, meeting in, uh, in June, uh, so I believe it, we need the motion to take it off the table.
I'll entertain the motion to take this off the table.
Move to take it off the table, sir.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead.
This is a, again, this was an item that was discussed at the, uh, the, the June 22 Council Meeting, and, uh, this is a zone change request from M2, General Industrial to R1D, uh, single family and single family attached. The applicant is requesting this change to be able to, uh, subdivide the property and bring it into legal conformance with the, uh, the Unified Development Code, so currently it's considered to be legal nonconformant, uh, because this, it was developed when, uh, single family homes were allowed within, uh, M2 zoning, but that's currently not, not permissible. And so, this zoning would bring the, uh, existing uses into conformance with that. The surrounding properties to the, the east and south are, northeast and south are currently, uh, M2, uh, General Industrial, and are, is the location of, uh, industrial, uh, use. Uh, to the west is also industrial, but all, and, uh, manufactured home, uh, residential zoning. Uh, it's currently developed with a duplex to the west and, and undeveloped land. The, uh, future land use guide identifies this property as single family, uh, medium-low density. Uh, generally, the area is, uh, developed with, this doesn't really show that, but developed with the, uh, the carrier plant, the, uh, to the east, and mainly the associated parking lots and, and, you know, driveways that are shown there. Uh, that, all those residential, or future residential lots you see here are not developed, uh, with, uh, homes. So, um, as you can, and so at the last meeting, the, uh, the, this item was tabled, the applicant discussed their, uh, their family history on, on the, on these properties, or on this property. Uh, and then the, the adjacent landowner that's shown with their opposition here in red, uh, they indicated that they, they still intend to use that property and actually expand, uh, uses on that property for industri, industrial use. And so they were opposed to that, that zone change, or this zone change request. Um, and the, the protest calculation is 61.07 percent. Uh, with that, with that, uh, level of opposition, it would require a, a three-quarters majority of City Council to approve this request. And so the, the applicant is here to, uh, to discuss their proposal, or to, to discuss their request, and the, uh, we do have representatives from the, uh, from the neighbor who's also here to, to speak.
Okay. Was there another item on the agenda last time across the road?
Yes.
Did it, did it just get dropped, or?
It was withdrawn by the applicant, yeah. It was, uh, just to the west there, the, that yellow RMH that was withdrawn by the applicant. They were proposing to rezone that, uh, for single family as well.
So this is to rezone this one because there's a house already there?
Right.
Okay.
There's actually two homes.
Okay. Uh, any questions for Kyle before I start calling folks up? I've got Joe Dobbs here. Do you want to just come up with questions, or wait till the end after the...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, next we have, I don't have a last name, Eduardo.
Yes, sir. Flores.
If you can come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Eduardo H. Flores. Uh, I currently live at 2310 Old Clayd Water Highway, which is one of the homes on, uh, that property. The reason that we're trying to get rezoned was because me and my brother Leo, which owns 2317, I will own 2313, have a stake in those homes as my father passes away. And the reason we're trying to do all this, rezone it, and then split the plot, is because we want to get ta, all this taken care of before his, his passing. Uh, I don't see an issue on it being rezoned, uh, since we're already being granted grandfather rights, so we still are going to occupy that land. Uh, I know that one of the City Council members was concerned about environmental issues. If you go up the road, something that Phoenix is not acquiring or plans to acquire, you have the subdivision Lisa, which you're still have residential homes. Now, I know this is for rezoning purposes, but I know the, that the sale of the homes has been taken in consideration, or that, uh, Frank wants to purchase these, Phoenix LLC. To my knowledge, we're not opposed to it. I have a family. I'm an Army veteran. I got out 2012, served in Afghanistan. I have three teenage girls and a baby coming. That, right now, looks as a home, one plot with two homes? I don't know how they're viewing it. I don't have the financial to go get me another house, so that is the reason that we're trying to split it. If my brother wants to deal with Phoenix to get rid of his home, I still have a home. And in reference to the prices with Phoenix, I'm not opposed to selling, but I do need something reasonable, something that Bob Westbrook had mentioned. House markets right now are very, very high. So, if Phoenix plans to acquire, and if my family plans to sell, they, I think, is in Phoenix's best interest to allow, I guess, the, the rezoning, so they can deal with us accordingly, because it's going to be a lot harder to get us all on the same page, on the same page. But my, my vote is to try to get it split, rezone it, and then split it. So, that's all I have.
Any questions for applicant?
I have something to say, yes. First, let me thank you for your service to the United States military, uh, as a war veteran, and extra special thanks, uh, to you. Have you had the conversation with Phoenix about how much money that you...
All the plots right now are still under my dad's name, so this is the reason that we're trying to rezone it, uh, split it, and then it can be on our name, because honestly, they've been talking to the wrong people. The person that this should talk, should be my father, and my father's not going to talk to them. These houses need to get split, uh, be given to the exact people that it owns, and then they will probably have a valid contract if they ever decide to go into contract, because right now everything's avoidable contract, even if it's informal. So our goal would be to split it, get it put under our name, and then we could probably start talking to her. And that was, that was our goal.
Okay, so is there someone that's a guardianship, a power of attorney, to speak on behalf of your father's...
Not at the current moment. I mean, it, it can be done. Uh, like I said, all this was just thrown on our lap so sudden, and, uh, we didn't expect Phoenix to try to acquire these properties, uh, so we're still trying to juggle with all that, uh, as far as legal things. But, uh, word of mouth from my father is, everybody will inherit, inherit the house, and those are the houses that have been mentioned. So, like I said, we're just trying to get the legal aspect down, and one of the first steps would be rezoning and splitting these houses so they can be put on our name.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions?
I've got a question for Deborah. Uh, Councilor, changing the zoning does not change the, uh, ownership of the property, correct?
No.
So if we, whether we approve the zoning or not, the property is still owned by the father?
From the details that I heard...
Yes, ma'am.
I don't really know who's the owner.
No, I understand it. Yeah, thank you.
And they can continue to live in the houses, even though it's not...
As I, I, it would be the same, I, I would assume.
And if we approve the zoning change, then the applicants would have to come back, replat the property to divide it.
Kyle?
Yeah, that's a Kyle question.
Uh, yes, the, uh, the applicant would need to subdivide the property, or could, would be able to subdivide the property with the zone change. Uh, and that would be, uh, wouldn't necessarily come back to City Council, but they would have to make that, that application to do that.
Okay, any other questions for applicant before we move on? All right, thanks, sir.
Did we say we have a representative from Phoenix? Did you say?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're going to get to that. Uh, German, probably not German, Herman, German Flores? You state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm German Flores, 2310 Old Clayd Water, and the house across the street. I was the applicant across the street, you know, I was going to build my house there. It makes sense. I mean, they opened my eyes, I mean, there's no sense for me to go build a $400,000 home in that, it's up there. So that's why I stopped my rezoning across the street. Basically, I told Mrs. Dobbs, like my little brother stated, I've been trying to tell them, uh, tell all of them, if y'all let it rezon, and like I told Phoenix, if you let it rezon, get it out of the way, you'll be able to tackle one at a time. You can't tackle, they're both hard-headed, so you can't get them to agree to nothing together. So you let them get the property, take ownership of it, and as soon as they take ownership, they can buy one at a time. And that's all I'm saying. I mean, it, it just makes no sense to leave it the way it is, because they can continue to live in it forever. I mean, you rezon it, they replot it, they take ownership, and now they can sell. I mean, I'm close to making a deal with Phoenix. If not, that's the reason I stopped, because if not, I could just put some mobile homes in there, sorry, sold this mobile home, and it can be a producing property for me. So, I don't know if y'all have any other questions?
All right, any questions for Mr. Flores?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cornelio Flores? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good mor...
Cornelio Flores.
Yeah, good morning, Council.
Do we have a caller on there, Cassandra?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to get to the caller right next. Go ahead.
Cornelio Flores, I'm, uh, 2317 Old Clayd Water. So again, just to kind of restate what David both said, um, the whole dividing, uh, part to Phoenix was, uh, so we could take ownership, obviously take care of some business before my father got any more sick. The other thing too is, is we're not opposed to selling. I would like not to, but if the opportunity presents itself, that it was something that we can make work to accommodate, uh, both my uncle and my dad, it's there, but like my brother German was saying, I started this, started the procedure, um, had the both plots measured out. At that point, uh, I was told that I couldn't go any further because they were resident, uh, they weren't residential, they were, um, commercial, and I wasn't going to be able to subdivide them, and again, this is all part of Phoenix. Once, um, we tried to rezone, is when we found out about Phoenix that was trying to buy, and then we weren't going to be able to, or that, you know, they opposed it, because they own most of everything around there. I think, just like German said, once they're split up, um, my younger brother has a family. Uh, I know that house is probably small for his full-size family. My house, you know, uh, I lived in it for 10 years, uh, I'd like to keep it, but again, you know, if, if the opportunity presents itself, we're always going to at least consider it. I think once it's split up, uh, once we have done, and there's more to come, because like you said, you do have to split it after the fact. Uh, I did have a will drawn up with an attorney, uh, prior to all of this, uh, and he recommended that I split it them and switch them to my name, um, because of the situation my dad was. He's, I think he's had three strokes. So, I took steps towards one way, then I got told that I needed to go the other way, and so this is kind of where we ended up. Um, I think I would still like to move forward and split it up, still divide the property, and then, I, I don't know where I would need to go to title them into our names individually. Uh, I feel that once they would be titled individually, like my older brother, or German said, we can negotiate. The person that's in charge of Phoenix of buying the properties could talk individually and come to agreement with the owners of the property. I'm sure if we got together with my dad, my dad would say, he's just not, he's not interested in settling. Uh, the biggest test has been talent. But, um, I mean, I think, I think in order to move forward, um... But, I mean, I think, I think in order to move forward, to try to come to an agreement, the properties would have to be split.
So, let me ask you this, and there's, there's not really a nice way to ask it, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. At, at the end of the day, will you guys all inherit these properties?
Okay, explain that to me, so I can understand.
When your father passes, will you end up, will you and your family end up with the, with these, with this property?
Yes, yes.
So, it eventually end up in your name?
Yes, yes. At one point, my father told me, hey, y'all need to change these houses in your name. Because he, he said, he said it himself, he said, I don't know how long I'm gonna be.
Okay.
You know, we hate to hear that from your father, right?
Right, sure.
But, but that's what he said, so, you know, I kinda waited, and, and not to put my youngest brother out there, but he, he was away for a long time, and I couldn't do anything. So, now that he's back, I took initiative to start the procedure, because I couldn't do anything without him.
Okay.
So, the property is currently in your father's name?
The prop, all three properties, the one across the street, two in the front, are all in his name. I, I started a will, I was told that I need to change the properties from where they were sown, because when I, when I told the lawyer, hey, these two houses are in one block, he's like, oh, well, you're gonna have to subdivide those before we can do a will, so everybody can take ownership of the property. Because if, if I didn't, if I didn't split it before the will, it would just show one block, and then we'd have to go just in one name, or both plots in two names.
If, if we approve the zoning change, then the one property, the zonings all changed for that one property, but it's still in your father's name, to come back and replat it, your father, through the title process, would have to agree to replat the property and divide it. So, you know, I don't know whether your father would agree to that or not. That's, that's gonna be your family business, but, but that's what y'all gotta understand, the process would be next, is your father would have to agree to that.
Well, my understanding is that you can have a representative for my father. My father is in no disagreement as far as splitting the properties. He's actually for, for that. The only thing is, him being here is kinda hard. I mean, we could probably manage it, but it wouldn't be an easy task.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Flores? Thanks, sir. Cassandra, do we have the attorney for Phoenix on the line?
We have Heather Niski on the line. Heather, if you would unmute, please.
Good, good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Good morning. This is Heather Niski. I'm appearing on behalf of Phoenix Tyler LLC and Phoenix Tyler Two LLC. Both entities own various parcels that surround the applicant parcel. I'd like to thank everyone on the council for their time in hearing out our concerns regarding this situation. We appreciate the tabling of this item at last month's meeting, in order to work on a resolution in the matter. And you guys have gotten, you know, from listening in here, you've gotten, you know, a little bit of an update here on the progress. So, we have made progress with Herman Flores, and are working towards a resolution. We have had various discussions with Leo Flores, but we have not, you know, you know, gotten to a resolution at this point. You know, and from hearing the conversation, and from also from our conversations with Mr. Flores, we understand that his goal is to split the land. Phoenix doesn't have an opposition to that splitting of the parcel, but we do remain opposed to the rezoning of the parcel. Again, as we reiterated last month, when we were there at, at the meeting, you know, to us, you know, obviously, our, our property is M2, you know, it's industrial. We intend to use that property as industrial property. It, it makes no sense to us to have to, to, you know, have a parcel in the middle of this that's changed to residential. You know, again, you know, as you guys are aware, that we talked of last time, you know, we own many surrounding parcels around this area. We've been working on clearcutting these parcels. You know, we're, we're going to be doing industrial development. And for that, I mean, we, we hope to try to come to some sort of resolution with the Flores's, but at this point, we still, you know, oppose that rezoning.
All right, any questions for Heather on the phone? All right, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
I have a question for Kyle.
All right, that, that is all the cards, so.
Kyle, I got a question for you, and, and just may have to help me out here. If we approved the Flores to rezone it from M2 to R1D, which then allows them to come back and replat the property, then from there, they're able to make, negotiate a deal with Phoenix to purchase the property, then can Phoenix come back to us through planning and zoning, and request that the property be rezoned to M2 to match property, like property around it?
Yes, they could.
So, by changing the zoning, it allows the Flores's then to negotiate individually with Phoenix, and then Phoenix can come, if they purchase a property, then they can come back?
Right.
Okay.
You know, part of me, it gets, it's almost like the, the spot zoning in reverse, where, you know, if, if Phoenix decides right now, because they own everything around it, if they wanna put in a, a concrete plant, they could put it right next to the Flores's house. And because the Flores's house is in M2, they really can't say anything about it. However, if it's sown R1A or R1D, then all of a sudden, they're in a residential neighborhood, and they could say, you can't have a, a concrete plant right next to my house. So, it's almost like the, the, I mean, this is a zoning case, and, and I, and I I sympathize with the whole family issue and all that, but we're here about zoning, and what's compatible in certain areas, and we deal with zoning all the time, and we talk about what works in what neighborhood, and what doesn't work in other neighborhoods, and we try to make things work that are compatible. And, you know, this just has this extra flair in there, because there are personalities involved, and, and an older father, and, and it makes it more complicated, but it's still a zoning matter. So, I struggle with it because of just, you know, having a residential house, and, and us possibly approving a residence in the middle of, I mean, you saw the, the red, it's all the way around it. So, that's just my, my, my personal view, so, I'll open it to the floor.
If I could just maybe clarify a little bit there. So, if, if the, if the neighbor did plan to put a concrete plant on their property, they still could, even if this were to be changed, it would just introduce some other design elements to that site, like a buffer yard, which would now be required if this is R1D. If there's a loading dock or anything like that, stuff like that would have to be adjusted based off of the zoning of this property. But, the ability, there'd be perhaps a reduced ability if they do need all that land, for sure. But, it wouldn't preclude them from necessarily using the property for industrial use.
Can, to kinda go down that road a little further, could, could we put restrictions on that? On the, on the, was it R1D? No, you can't, no.
Mr. Mayor, I too struggle with this, because I know a lot of people who lived in that area during the time that Carrier was there, that died of cancer, lots of people. So, I struggle simple, because I know that there would be more environmental issues coming forth with the industry there.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll add briefly that, even if this were to be changed, if the zone, zoning were to be changed, there's still an issue with the plating, and the zone change doesn't change the ownership legally. The deeds would have to do that, and from what I've heard from both brothers, there might be some legal capacity issues with the father, and, and according to the question asked earlier, there's no current power of attorney, and so I don't know, without getting into more details from the family, if the ownership change could even happen for Phoenix to then negotiate with all the brothers. So, from a legal perspective, even if we were to make this zoning change, I don't know if they could even negotiate with the brothers.
Okay, while, while we continue all this, Joe, I never gave you a chance to come back, did you wanna? You, you need to come up here if you're gonna speak. Name and address for the record, you're up here now.
Joe Dobbs, 16098 Treasure Cove, in Bullard. I'm here for questions, but if we do change, if you do change the zoning, we're not, I mean, we're not sure that we can get a negotiated deal done in buying them. They're planning on that, but that's the problem with this. Wonder if we can't do a deal, then it's stuck as residential in the middle of a industrial complex.
Okay, any questions for Joe, Ms. Dobbs? Sorry, Ms. Dobbs. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Come to the microphone. Yes, sir.
Okay, so, my question is, is if you, if you leave it residential, don't change the zoning, my understanding was that you wouldn't be able to split. So, my question is, if we leave it commercial, could you still split the property?
I don't think we're qualified to, we're not attorneys. I'm not an attorney. Kyle?
As is, no, because the, the minimum lot size for an M2 property is like 15,000 square feet. And so, that's, unless it's 30,000 square feet in size, which I believe it is. So, that, that would be the issue, and then, so lot size, and then perhaps a lot frontage might be an issue with that, too. So, those are, that's kinda, my understanding was that was the, the reason for the, the change, to be able to have a smaller minimum lot size. That, that'd be absent any, any variation to, to that minimum lot size approved by, you know, the zoning board of adjustment. But, as it stands, that, that would not be, not be, probably not be feasible based off of the, the size of that lot right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so their challenge is they got two homes on one lot.
Okay, are you done?
Just one more. So, as far as, to answer kind of your question a little bit, as far as changing the properties to our name, you have all three parties here, that, that basically, that my father has, and we're all in agreeance, if, if it came down to it, and we had to, did hire an attorney to switch everything to our name, which we're gonna have to eventually, because my brother still owns the property across the street. We still have plans for that. Like I said, that was the initial thing from the beginning, and that's what drove us to all this. I wish we were having to do all this, but, but the initial was to go ahead and change the properties with my father's name to our name, so that way, all that's taken care of, you know? Because we, we just had our mom pass last year, and that was a no deal. So, we're just kinda planning ahead, because you never know.
Okay, thank you, sir. Kyle, when you, when you talk about supermajority or three fourths, you got seven people up here. What does that mean?
It would be six out of seven.
Six out of seven.
Six out of seven. Okay.
I have one more question.
Okay.
So, I wanna hear you say, tell me why, there, there's no way to split that property with the current zoning?
Uh, one-
I know, I know we don't wanna do that, but you're saying that there's no way to do it?
Not without a, a variance to the minimum lot size for M2. And that's something that the board, or the council could, I mean, the process for that would be to go, or the applicant to make a request through the zoning board of adjustment, and use kind of the, you know, the hardships of, associated with the property, to say why perhaps, you know, the, that property, those lots should be smaller than, than the 15,000 square feet. And one of those could be, you know, the fact that the property, the, the use of the properties are legal non-conforming. And the likelihood, or the, there, there's a challenge with getting the, bringing those into conformance, and so it, it may be something that the board can't consider, granting a variance for, to allow the non-conformity to exist as is, also allow the applicant to subdivide their property while allowing that non-conformity, with the eventual understanding that, that may all go away, either through no longer using the property this way, or being purchased by another property owner.
What would they need to do to start that process?
Yeah, they would just make a, a application for a, a variance to the zoning board of adjustment, and they would just detail what their, what the hardships are associated with the property. That would be the process to, perhaps could be another avenue to accomplish what they're trying to do without the zone change.
But the, the neighbors are still gonna be notified within 200 feet to come, and they're gonna go protest at the variance board?
If they're, right. It doesn't sound to me like they were concerned necessarily with the subdivision of the property, but perhaps just the, the zoning of the property.
Correct. That seems like a lot better solution than that.
Because it sounds like we're, we're voting on some property that belongs to someone else that's not here in the court, that's not here, talking about that property. We have someone else who does not actually own it, and that's the son's. It's the father that did not present this to us.
Correct. I believe Leo was listed as the, well, he was listed as the agent representative for his father?
Well, that was the question I was asking earlier.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Was there someone who has been designated to represent the father, and they said no?
On the application for the zone change, yes, but not from a power of attorney, I, I don't think so.
All right, any further discussion before I entertain a motion?
So, if they go, if they pursue this line, we, I guess we would, if they were gonna do that network, we would not pass this.
That's, would be my understanding.
That's correct, yes.
So, I know we tabled this once. Do we need to table it and allow them to go back to the board of adjustments, and then see how that process works?
It's longer than 30 days.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I think either option, because the thing, I guess, really, the, the only reason you would want to table it today is, if you, because remember, you gotta get to a supermajority for a vote.
I don't think we're gonna get that.
Yeah, and so, and you still gotta get to a supermajority of a vote if it bring it back. ZBA, once ZBA takes action, ZBA, that action will, will not come back to council. That action will then give them the ability, if approved, variances are approved for the minimum lot size to be modified, then they'll be able to take that and go do, as far as what they need to, without ever having to come back to council.
So, if we deny it, then they can still do that? They can still go to?
They can still go to ZBA, and to, to request that variance.
And whatever happens there is not appealable to the city council. That's, that's it.
Yes. But that route, according to Phoenix, and Phoenix's representative, seems like a more viable route, because Phoenix's main concern is they wanna keep them to designation. And I think the hardship case, they could go plead in front of ZBA, is an avenue that would work. My concern still is, is you've got the three brothers, do each one of them, through their father's estate, each one of them get a third, or the brother across the street has his piece, and the two brothers have the ownership, will inherit the property that we're in discussion with. Does the family have, and it's none of my business, but do they have the proper documentation in place that that would happen, that would then allow them to go negotiate with Phoenix's representative, Ms. Dobbs? That's not ours to, but that's-
Beyond our control.
I felt like playing the Jeopardy music. One more time.
So, to answer your question, yes. It would be split as far as not all together, but separately. My father assigned this house to you, this house to you, and my brother got the one across the street that was right next to his property. So, everybody has what they're getting, because that's what he said he wanted you to have. So, we didn't argue it, we just said, okay. We were happy that we got something. But yes, I mean, there is a, individually, this is your house, this is your house, and this is gonna be for yours once that passes.
So, would you all be satisfied with what we're discussing right now?
So, the, the only concern that I have is if it, if it gets turned down, or you're telling us that we might have to go, then this goes away. I, I can't come back and do this again. My, my thing is, I'm telling you, I, I'm not opposed to working something out with Phoenix, the negotiating has not even started with us. but the negotiating has not even started with us. German has negotiated, he worked something out, I'm very happy for him. The lady on the phone said that they've tried, I've had two calls, maybe one or two texts, but never have we talked about, hey, we're willing to give you this much for both properties. It's very difficult to come in agreeance with having two people own two individual houses and realistically what they think their houses are worth. I think I know what I want for mine if I were to sell it. The only thing, like I said, my concern is my uncle is currently living in it. I've come to an agreement with my brother that we would just move him back to the old house, make it livable, and, and I'm okay with that. But again, it, it's just really hard to negotiate numbers with somebody that hasn't given you an offer, hasn't talked to both parties that own both houses. So how do you come to an agreement, right? How do you, how do you agree to something if there hasn't been a number yet, and the other party hasn't even been spoken to?
Have you given them a number?
I, I haven't, I, I played around with the idea of, I looked at the market, at what the market is selling. I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking for a brand new house with just a hundred and eighty dollars a square foot, or a hundred and sixty dollars a square foot. I think I would be in the lower hundreds of square foot. Again, I, I don't know yet, because I haven't really given it a whole bunch of thought about what I would take for the property, because my most concern would be to split them, that way we can actually move forward and do something.
And I see, that's part of the problem, to me, is you've got a residential house right in the middle of an industrial area, so your, your price per foot can't be the same as a house that's, that's in a full residential area.
I understand that, and, and, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm asking for that. I, I haven't come up with one.
Don't say what you're, don't say it here either.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the thing about it is, is for me, for me, it's just, it's something that my father gave me, it, it's residual income, which, you know, we all hope to have someday. I have no problem keeping the house, I, I would like to, but at the same time, when, when you're presented with a blessing, don't just turn it down. I mean, this, it, they're kind of, they're kind of a good thing, you know?
All right.
We just have to kind of look at it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, this is an action item, so. One more time.
This is a big one, but I just want to verify that we're not opposing to the growth of Tyler. I know it's going to bring four, five hundred jobs. We're residents of Tyler since I was born, but we're not opposed to this growth whatsoever. It's just very, very, I don't see it viable like that Phoenix will be able to compensate accordingly for this small plot with two houses. There, it's not, the square foot, there are different methods to come to the true value of a home. There's no possible way that they're going to come to an actual price where I can go and get a lot with two houses, and my brother gets his own and I get my own. I understand the legal documents are not in place, we, we as a family will get that accordingly, but I just feel that if we don't, if we cannot split this home, they're going to come to a dead stop. I'm not saying that there's not other ways of them acquiring this property, but it's probably going to take longer. Like I said, I'm not opposed to possibly selling, I just feel like I'm pressured into a sell right now, because I feel that the zoning is contingent based on me selling, and I feel that I'm pressured. I know that's not the case, but as an individual, that's how I feel right now. It's grandfather rights, I understand, that somebody mentioned about a concrete plant, I think it was you, Mayor. In the last meeting, they said they were building workhouses. So with that being said, I mean, five hundred feet from, right down the road, there's a subdivision Lisa that's still there. So I, I just think that it's just best to split this house, that way everybody can deal with them accordingly. I mean, we're not opposed to selling.
Okay, thank you, sir. And, and once again, this is between the Flores and Phoenix, this is not between us. I mean, we're, we're here to, to decide on a zoning case. So, that being said, you know, I would, I would love to, I don't want to just kick the can down the road, but, but it's, we need to, we need to make a decision, what kind of action we want to take.
I think pursuant to the exception, the exception or exemption of the variance, variance is the, is the best case for this. We don't, we don't introduce something into that area that doesn't belong, they can achieve what they're wanting, the splitting the property, having two properties, and then they can legally each have their own and negotiate on their own, I think that's the best avenue for it.
So would you want to make a motion to deny it, or table it until they...
Well, I would make a motion to deny it.
Is, is that a motion?
Yes, a motion to deny.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Curtis, second by Haney, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries to deny it.
Can you get with them, explain the process on, to obtain a variance?
Sure. Will do.
Good luck. Thank you.
Yes.
Would council, you know, because what are the costs involved with ZBA?
Three hundred and eighteen dollars.
Three hundred and eighteen.
Would council like to waive as far as, as, to, to help move this along, waive the fee associated with...
Flores, don't leave yet.
Sure, before, before ZBA?
Be sure. Do, is that a, do it to take action on that?
Uh, perhaps give a direction, do we think they'd need a motion and approval if they want to waive the fee, get a motion? So yes.
I'll make a motion to waive the fee that they will be responsible for, for the variance.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to waive the fee to, to request a variance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, that'll get you started. Thank you, guys. Z four.
This is a zone change request from AR Adaptive Reuse District, RPO Office District to C1 Light Commercial. This is on Old Bullard Road. The applicant's requesting the change to allow for additional commercial uses on, in that area. The adjacent properties to the north, north and east are zone C1 and are developed with commercial uses. To the west are developed with duplexes, and then to the south is developed with an office. This request would amend the future land use guide to general commercial, which would match the, the other properties in that area. This, this property was rezoned to, to AR back in 2012 to allow for the mixture, or mixed use of like a light, light office, light retail with that, that home that was there. That has since changed, and so the applicant is requesting to just make that commercial, commercial property. Of the notices that were sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition, and the plan to commission by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Stuart.
Stuart. Motion by Haney, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Z five.
This is a zone change request from C2 General Commercial to R1D Single Family Residential. This is in the, the north end of revitalization area. This would, the applicant's requesting the ability to develop single-family homes. For some reason, these two properties are zone C2, which is not, not correct, and so the, the applicant is requesting the ability to zone it to something that is more appropriate for that area. All the surrounding properties are, are zone R1B, but are developed, and are developing single-family homes. The size of this property would suggest that they, they could develop two detached single-family homes on these two lots, which would help implement the Tyler first goal of adding more rooftops to the north end. The, the plan that is zoning commissioned by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Second.
Uh, motion by McGee, second by Curtis, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Z six. Everybody looks every bored out there.
Uh, this next request is a, a change from R1A Single Family to C1 Light Commercial. This is to allow the, the properties to develop, be developed for commercial uses. This is along Gentry Parkway, again, also in the, the north end of revitalization area. And the, the surrounding properties are developed with the, to the west are developed with single-family homes. Some, some of those properties are undeveloped because there's, there's no street access, even though it's shown there. To the south is a commercial, commercially, commercially zoned property. It's a location of self-storage facility, also a single-family home. To the north, it's currently undeveloped, but it is zoned for multi-family. The, this request would amend the future land use guide to reflect neighborhood commercial, which is something you generally see along Gentry Parkway. It would allow the introduction of additional neighborhood-serving commercial land uses for, for that area. The, we did receive one letter in opposition from a neighbor to the northwest there, two point three, five percent, they did not indicate their, their reason for opposition. The, the plan that is only commissioned, I'll go back to the, the map, the, the map here, it does show, there is a right-of-way for Patricia Drive, but it's currently not built, so there's no street there. And so that does provide some, some buffer, some consideration from that neighborhood and this, this development. And so, the plan to commission by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle before we go to these cards?
That Patricia Drive, you said there's no street there, is that going to be on the west side of the, or the east side of?
The west side.
The west?
Yeah.
Right here?
Yep.
Oh, there's a street.
There is no street.
Yeah, there's a development.
Right, I understand that, that's why I was trying to see which side. What kind of business, do you know?
Uh, I understand it would be just a commercial retail district.
Retail.
All right, I do have a couple of cards here. Dorinda Henderson-Williams, you want to come up and speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, my name is Dorinda Henderson-Williams. My address is 2902 Schaefer Lane, who's got the S-H-A-F-F-E-R, Tyler, 75702. Thank you for allowing me this moment. I'm here to represent Schaefer Lane property owners, and also we have another owner here with us. More property owners would have been here this morning, but due to employment, it's impossible for them to attend. And we're, we're not opposing the fact that they want to sell the property, but we are petitioning the fact that it's going to be a retail. And due to that fact, it's, we have high drainage traffic, uh, high drainage flow on our street right now, and that's a possibility, it's going to increase more and more. We're at the point of where the water is going to get into our houses, and we have water coming from the west side, and we have water coming from the north side, and from the south side, and it's when it rains, it's like a flowing river flushing down on Schaefer Lane. And so with this, bringing this real retail in there, this water is going to increase because of the drainage system, the way it's set up, it's not set up properly, okay? So the city council and planning and zoning department, we the undersigned owners of property to be affected by the requested zoning change described in the reference letter dated June seventeen, twenty twenty-two, which all the property owners did not receive a copy of the letter, we just found out about it last night. Due to the hereby protests against any changes with the properties known as 2019, 2027, and 2033, that's on Patricia Drive, thirty, twenty, West Gentry Parkway, and twenty-eight oh four, Schaefer Lane. And all the Schaefer Lane property owners will be affected by this change. We the property owners on Schaefer Lane is protesting against the rezoning proposal. We have signatures and comments to submit regarding the protest against the rezoning. Here are some of the reasons why the property owners are against the rezoning. First, like I mentioned, the increase in the drainage problems, which already exists due to inadequate drainage system by the city. Number two, this will cause high traffic flow on Schaefer Lane, which is a no outlet street at this time. Number three, this will cause high crime rates and violence within our neighborhood, which is, this is a really quiet neighborhood, and kids can play, and we not have any problems. We don't have any, we had a few burglaries there, but I think everybody in the neighborhood went to the point of installing security systems, so we haven't had that since then. We're concerned about the safety of our children, which is number four, because we allow the kids to ride up and down the streets on their bicycles, three-wheelers or whatever, but that's going to be an increase with crime possibilities for the kids if this retail store comes in. The street will accumulate lots of unwanted trash in the neighborhood. Number six, this would affect the home values, and number seven, this could create a lot of accidents on the corner without a signal light, due to the heavy shrubbery on the community of Schaefer and the high traffic flow down Gentry on sixty-nine. Because if you come through there early in the morning doing time for work hours, in the evening time, when individuals get off of work, that's really, really high traffic during that time, and people are just speeding up and down Gentry. We the property owners on Schaefer Lane have come together and made an honest decision to petition, petition against the rezoning of the two point two-four acres for retail. We humbly submit our petition to the city and the zoning to take deep consideration for request of zoning change, deny the request of zoning change.
Thank you. Can, can you or someone up here tell me, where is this on Gentry? I can't, I can't picture it.
Cube, you got Cube Storage, and then you have several houses, like two or three houses, and then there's Schaefer Lane, it's right there on the corner, it's right behind the park.
Yeah, so Gasaway Park, which sits higher up, and that's, that's actually part of the drainage problem issue, is Gasaway, all those neighborhoods up there to the west and north kind of come flowing down, Schaefer sits kind of in a bowl, so you have it to where there's water's flowing down onto Schaefer from, from that area as it comes off of that hill.
Where's Gasaway?
Gasaway is going to be to, you can kind of see, up, kind of onto the north and to the, the west there.
And the drainage, I think at one point in time, the city was going to put in a drainage section there, but they came out and closed those holes off, so now we just have the water actually flowing down Schaefer Lane. When it rains, it pours, it's like, you just come out there sometimes when it's raining hard, you see.
So what's, what's across the street?
Across the street is owned by the zoo, and that's the zoo house and...
Are you, are you Ms. Nash?
I'm Ms. Nash.
You're going to be next.
So, yes, so it's across the street from Schaefer Lane. And see, we have the water flowing in from the Cube Storage. I went there to look and see exactly, and they, I guess the city allowed them to put that drainage flow where it's just a V light off of their property onto the neighbor's property, which then flushes into my backyard, and you cannot, it's almost to the point it's in my garage, and that's causing damage to my house as well. And so, and then it runs down my driveway as a flowing river onto Schaefer, and then you've got this water coming down off of Gentry, and then you have the water coming from the other houses as well. So it's just, we're just surrounded by water drainage.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Nash, you're next. Are you, are you going to be as long as Dorinda? No, I'm kidding.
She has covered everything, but I, I know.
Just see if you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Wanda Nash, I live at the bottom of the hill with my husband. The, it's the Caldwell Zoo, and then Gentry. Schaefer runs perpendicular into Gasaway Park. And my husband was telling me that the drainage system, they put in those, along the, the streets, they put in those open places. they put in those open places, but they did not run any pipes underneath it to take the drainage off. So, the water was coming down and just going into those holes and then coming back because there wasn't anywhere for it to go. But anyway, like, like she was saying, when it rains real hard, there's about six feet in the center of the road that is dry. It's up to the curb and sometimes over the curb, it's just water, just comes flying through there. And you just have to be aware of it. And my husband was saying, he sent us, sent a letter, and the flooding comes from the Gentry Parkway, near the Van Highway, the area of Passadas, and the Caldwell Zone surface. It all just comes down the block. And let's see, um, the, it's, there, I don't even know where Patricia Lane is. I've never seen it. Okay, well, I've never seen anything about it, but Schaefer is a no-outlet street. If commercial goes down that way, there'll be traffic coming down, probably trying to get out, down, you know, and they'll just have to turn around in our driveways. So, it's not really set up for commercial. It would be fine if it's just stayed on Gentry though. But that's all I've got to say.
All right, any questions or comments for Ms. Nash?
One thing I'd say...
Oh, you have to come back up here.
The Metcalfs, they can sell the property, but not sell it for retail. Sell it for homeowners, you know, that way. And it would still beautify Gentry Parkway. Putting homes in that area as opposed to retail. So, that's where we are at this point with it. And plus, they have all that land behind my house, they can put homes back there besides run the business.
Okay, thanks. All right, I'm going to give the applicant the ability to come up. Is the applicant here? So, the applicant is not here. That's Cassandra, or who's that?
That's for the next one.
So, the applicant's not here.
Has there been any discussion between the applicant and homeowners?
Have y'all had any conversations with the applicant?
No.
Can you, can you come back up here, I'm sorry? Probably shouldn't have asked you that without getting you back up here.
Trick question.
Yeah, yeah. I'll go see if you fell for it.
No, we found out, the majority of the owners on the street found out about it last night. One homeowner came knocking on my door, asking me, hey, Dorinda, you aware of everything that goes on? What about this retail that's going on, on Schaefer Lane? I said, I'm not aware. So, at that point, I said, okay, we, this is what we can do. We can go to the city council and discuss it. And one said, well, I received a letter, and everybody's like, I didn't get a letter. So, everyone's in a panic here about what's going on. So, we rather, really haven't had a chance to talk with the Metcalfs, I think that's how they pronounce the name, and the Schaefers.
Okay, are you in that 200-foot radius? Were you notified?
I was not notified, but the house across the street was notified.
Okay.
Yeah, she wasn't in the 200-foot notice.
Okay, all right, thank you.
200 feet, what about the house across the street on the right-hand side, and I'm on the left-hand side?
The, yes, everything within the 200 feet of the radius was notified.
Okay, so, that's it, that doesn't justify why, if he's across the street, 200 feet is not going to be one-sided. 200 feet is going to wear in a, go in a square, right?
No, it'll be a radius.
Huh?
A radius, so it'll be a circle.
A circle, okay, so then, then, so let's say the house that sits here, and I'm sitting over there, we still should have been in the same circle, right?
No.
So, say...
Trick question.
What if he's here and I'm here? So, you're going to come like this and then that? So, you're cutting it off, you're going like this?
Let's calculate it as per state law.
That's correct, so this, this is, this is on my property, that, and my property sits here, and all this is behind my house.
Okay.
No problem.
I'm sorry I asked.
Is it opposite of the 200 feet?
But nevertheless, I didn't get a letter.
Okay. Thank you. You can sit down now.
You know, I didn't get a letter, nor did the, the property owners in the community, in the, on the Schaefer Lane. And we're just concerned about this drainage issue. That's our high priority, is the drainage issue and the safety of our children, which we're allowed to run freely up or down that street. And now, we're not going to be able to do that anymore.
Okay.
Now, we love our community, we love Tyler.
Okay, any other questions for Kyle, or for any of the, the folks that are here, or any further discussion?
So, was she within that 200-foot radius?
I don't know, I don't think so.
Okay.
The, but certainly, we have two issues too. We probably need to look at the drainage on that street, which doesn't have anything to do with the zoning, but the, uh, you know, I would be in favor of giving them some time to communicate.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but we have talked about it a lot.
To communicate the developer and homeowners.
You know how I feel about applicants that don't show up? And I really do think that if you're going to fight for an item, or, or have an item that's on the agenda, you should be here to, to, to address it. And, and we've, we've done this before. I mean, if, if you're making a motion to table it for 30 days to give the applicant an opportunity to, to meet with the owners or to be present, that's fine, but it...
I haven't made it yet.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not putting the words in your mouth.
But what are you suggesting?
Well, that was easy.
I mean...
Hear what he's suggesting.
I mean, I, I'm fine with, with, I mean, I'm fine with tabling it for 30 days to, so there could be discussion, just like on Crooked Trail. I mean, where people can, can talk to one another. But I, I just want it to be known going forward, if you got a, if you got something you're, you're fighting for, fight for it.
Right.
It just frustrates me.
And we have no, we don't know if the applicant will reach out to the neighborhood or not. That's, that's the unknown, they haven't, it's, for those that spoke, they haven't.
Is there a way that you can ask the applicant to reach out to Ms. Nash and Ms. Williams?
Sure, yeah, and up, up until this morning, we, we hadn't heard any, any of the concerns. So, the applicant's not aware of those, and they're, yeah, sure, they're not here to, to respond to it right now, but, um, yeah, we can make them aware of, get, get, uh, get their information and go, go from there.
Move to table Z6 for 30 days.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. H1, thank you Kyle, fabulous job.
Thank you.
See you, see you in a month.
It'll be the August 24th?
Thank you.
Yeah, I was wondering what that day is.
Mayor and Council, as they are getting up the presentation, I'm going to present the next two items to you, H1 and H2. Yes, I'm still your city attorney, but I have been, I am helping with the Neighborhood Services Department. And along with me today, we will have one of our HUD consultants, Parker Harrison, who has been with the city before and now serves as consultant for us. We also have Madeline Teal, who is in our audience, and they are both here to help me with any questions that you might have. You also may know already that we are in the process, selection process, to hire a community development manager with respect to these two items. So, first for H1, this is a request that the city council consider holding a public hearing on the fiscal year '22 and '23 Community Development Grant, Block Grant Program, and the Home Investment Partnership Program, CDBG and Home, AKA Annual Action Plan. And then to consider adopting and ordinance approving the plan next. So, just to remind you that with respect to the annual plan and also our five-year plan under HUD, we have established identity, uh, priority needs for these programs. Number one is to have infrastructure for our housing and development. Number two is decent and affordable housing. Three, reducing substandard structures. And four, to address homelessness. That is in our five-year plan. Next. Next, yes ma'am. So, the process for public participation on the annual plan for 2022, '23 included two public hearings. We had those at two additional sites on March 21st. We had a public hearing at the Neighborhood Services Department. And on April 23rd, we had an additional one at Glass Rex Center. Both of those public hearings, we received no comments on the annual plan. There was an additional public comment period for 30 days that started on May 26, 2022, and went through June 26, 2022. Here is what our basic annual plan for 2022, '23 looks like in the programming of the funds. As usual, there's 20% for administration, but the pri, primary areas are again in line with what our goals are, substandard structure programming. We have new construction out there, public facilities projects, first-time homebuyer program. And we also have a reserve for a CHODO, which is also for homelessness and housing. So, in order to move forward on our 2022, '23 plan, the next steps are for the city council to have a public hearing today to review any, receive any comments or from the public on the plan. Then to receive your approval, if you so choose. And finally, then to go ahead and submit the annual plan to HUD. Parker, are you there?
Yes ma'am, I am.
Okay.
Good morning.
So, first, um...
Do we need to open a pub, public hearing?
We need to open up a public hearing, yes sir.
All right, we'll now open up a public hearing on the fiscal year '22, '23 Community Development Block Grant Program and Home Investment Partnership Program Annual Action Plan.
And if you ask...
Anybody want to make any comments? I don't see anybody coming forward, so we will now close the public hearing. Go ahead.
Thank you sir, and then now, we just ask the city council to consider approving this annual plan for our CDBG and Home programs.
Do we need to do them separately?
Uh, yes.
Move to approve H1?
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. H2.
Appreciate that, so now, also with respect to the programming for CDBG, the City of Tyler had received what is called CDBG CARES Act funding in 2019. And so, in accordance with the Citizen Participation Plan under CDBG, City of Tyler is planning on amending its 2019 annual plan. This amendment is for the purpose of to reallocate funds to a new project. And that project is PT Coal Park. So, as a part of the CDBG and Home requirements, as always, we need to have a citizen comment on a proposed substantial amendment. And so, again, there is a process with that. We have already had a 30-day public comment period on the substantial amendment for the 2019 funds. That comment period ran from May 17, 2022 to June 17, 2022. Also, there have been no comments on the substantial amendment. Today, we should have another public hearing with respect to the substantial amendment. And we would also ask, following the public hearing, that you, again, approve these amendments to the 2019 plan. Now, the PT Coal Project will address the need in the community for better health and recreation, health and wellness facilities. And this CARES Act funding is in order to help local governments respond to COVID crisis. So, another public hearing, sir.
All right, we'll now open up a, a public hearing for citizen participation and consider approving a substantial amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan on Community Development Block Grant Program Coronavirus Funds. Anyone wish to come up and speak on this item? Benny? Stephanie? Anybody want to come speak? Okay, nobody's coming forward, so we are now going to close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
And again, Mayor and Council, we ask that you consider approving this substantial amendment of the 2019 COVID CARES Act funds for the PT Coal Park project.
Someone? Second.
Uh, motion by McGee, second by Curtis, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
If I may, I would just like to, again, give an honorable mention to Alicia Buckner and Prentice Butler, and Maddie Teal, Maddie, it feels stand-up.
Hey Maddie.
That have helped us through this process. Thank you.
All right, R1, Chief Tapper.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilors, good to see you today.
Good morning.
Every year, we come to the council seeking a resolution to participate in the Justice Assistant Grant from the Department of Justice for the Edward Byrne Burn Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. This year, we're moving forward, requesting that we, your support as we apply for a grant up to $34,000. Our intention this year is to buy a Leica 3D scanning for, for our use in part of our accident investigation, but also our forensic portion of crime scene next door. It'll allow us to place that machine in, in this room or any other room we're in, and move it around, and take, make a 3D image of their actual room at the crime scene or any other thing that we want to, we want to capture, so we can actually put the, the jury or anybody else we're going to show that to in the room and see how it, the way the system works is, as you set it up, it takes a million measurements a minute with 65 panoramic pictures. As we move all the way through it, we can, we can have the opportunity to really do the best job we can to present cases to the Smith County District Attorney. We'll use this portion of the funding for, in addition to some, some pledges from another agency here, and also some funding we have at the police department. The actual total price of it, when we get ready to come back to you, is about $109,000 for this camera system. This grant will go a large way to pay for that. Recommended, the city council authorized the city manager on behalf of Tyler Police Department to apply for and accept grant funding from the Department of Justice under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant in an amount not to exceed $34,000 for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. All grant funding will be utilized to purchase equipment for the Tyler Police Department.
So, Chief, when you have a major crime scene, where in the past you've had guys out there all night...
Yes, sir.
Putting those little cones up and measuring every little thing, how does this replace?
You know, when we, when we, a couple of years ago, we expanded our accident investigation capability. Pretty much our traffic unit and a few others that have, that have had the skill are part of this accident investigation team led by Lieutenant Luke Schaefer right now. Jeff Rack, that takes care of our crime scene here, they can take this... They can take this out to that scene, like close the street off and put it up, and it'll make those measurements and actually recreate the entire street, the cars where they're at, any debris that's on the ground in an extremely timely manner. We're not out there closing streets for five, six, seven hours. We can take those measurements one point at a time.
That's just amazing technology.
When we, when we come back, if they actually make the purchase, we'll actually do presentations. Y'all can actually see some examples of the actual renderings that they do, and it is, it's a pretty amazing piece of work.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion by Haney, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. R2. Ms. Robinette.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
How does it sound, ladies and gentlemen? The Parks and Recreation Department is seeking authorization to apply for the local parks non-urban outdoor grant through Texas Parks and Wildlife. And if awarded, we want to use these funds to renovate Winners Park, which is located at 910 Peach Street. It is a 50/50 matching grant. They did move up the submittal deadline, which is usually in December. So now it's August 1st, so we're working pretty quickly to get these, this, this application completely ready for submittal. So who's requesting, I'm requesting that the city council consider adopting a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for a local parks grant and authorizing the city manager to take all actions needed to receive and expend grant funds.
Any questions for Lee Ann?
Move to approve R2.
Thanks.
Motion by Curtis, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we're now down to the consent agenda. Anything need to be pulled or make a motion as-is?
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Winn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A few items of note. Um, the City of Tyler Solid Waste Department will begin collecting residential garbage and recycling at 6:00 a.m. instead of 7:00 a.m. for the month of August due to the continuing high temperatures. The earlier start times will allow crews to work during the cooler hours and be able to finish the routes earlier before the afternoon. And so that will get, be started on Monday, August 1st, and will run through Friday, September 2nd. We are asking, making sure that our customers understand to put the garbage and recycling containers out before 6:00 a.m. on their scheduled collection day. So as always, if you go to use the Tyler Talks Trash App or the, the City of Tyler app, we'll also send you information about that straight to your phone, so you'll know. You know, the questions come up occasionally with the amount of water, mandatory water rationing that are happening around us about our own water supply. The lakes, the present lake levels are not causing any concerns about the water supply at this time for the City of Tyler and its customers. Our staff is continuing to monitor the lake levels in the case of a continued drought of just what impact it might be. One of the things we do remind people just is that we actually have, since 2012, a voluntary water rationing schedule that's there for people to know. We've been able to kind of push that out through the media a little bit, and we'll continue to expand on that. So by no means mandatory, but it kind of gives some good, as far as just irrigation techniques and tips to people and helps them understand how they can be responsible with our water supply and use in irrigating their yards and lawns. Fun Forest Pool, speaking of water, but in a different way. Fun Forest Pool saw about 850 guests a couple of weekends ago and continues to have high numbers even despite the heat. We originally thought the extreme heat would kind of defer swimmers from being able to come out there, but the attendance hasn't seen much of a decline. In fact, if you drive by Fun Forest Park, especially on a weekend, you'll see the line out the door, ready to go in there and to go have some fun. And so that has been a great addition for our community. And then finally, a great story that kind of happened by accident is we were recently contacted by Caldwell Zoo because they saw as far as some of the stuff that we were kind of cutting down and maintaining in regards to, just as far as brush that was out there in some of our drainage ways or along some of our rideaways. And it turns out that many of the animals that are out there at Caldwell Zoo love to eat and play with hackberry trees and some of the other shrubs that we removed. So the trash trees that typically would end up going to the landfill alike are now somewhat going to the zoo where the animals are able to chew on and to play with and use. So that has turned into an interesting partnership that we didn't see coming, but we are glad to make sure that the animals out there are having a good time. So with that, Mayor, time back over to you, sir.
All right. Any other comments or questions for the city manager?
Ed, what, what zone, water level zone do we start getting more concerned about water restrictions?
We really start as far as, especially at Lake Tyler's, when we watched to see if decreases in that. You know, some of the work that, you know, that we, that y'all have done are authorized for us to do with the dam improvements. And I know you've kind of spent quite a bit of money over the past few years with improvements to that dam out of Lake Tyler. That has proved to be as far as just essential through the drought you're going through now. You're not having the water loss that you may have had in decades past with some of the just kind of faulty, faulty leaks or the like with the dam or erosion that was occurring over there. So, but we continue to monitor, especially at Lake Tyler, just at the levels to see if, for any reason, we haven't even turned on our wells yet for any as far as decline that's occurring over there that is causing for us to be concerned about the amount of water coming into the system and availability.
Very fortunate.
Any other questions or comments for the city manager? Put him on the spot? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
We are adjourned.